October, but because we adopted a new calendar just only a few months before October, we wanted to give a chance to kind of see how things were going and to get some feedback. So I have with me today, as you know, Chief of Staff Marty Smith, who picked up the torch as Dan Paris left the division, and Marty has been working with the calendar as well. And then Cindy Trinka, who's a specialist in human resources, who's worked on the calendar for 10-plus years as well. My colleague Kim Dockery will certainly be available to come up if we have anything specific regarding instructional practices. This calendar does represent the great thinking of a number of folks in throughout FCPS. We have vetted this through a number of different organizations, the Superintendent's Teacher Advisory Council, on which sits members of the teacher associations, several of, all of the principal associations, our constituent group, the Human Relations Advisory Council, which has parents and constituents as well. And so we're very pleased to say that we've got a lot of input in terms of this. One thing that I do want to make sure that you are aware of, because we've had a lot of questions around Labor Day and a pre-Labor Day start, and what in fact could we do if, with a pre-Labor Day start? Because this year is the year that we have Labor Day at probably the latest date possible, which is the 7th of September. I also know that since Lauten and Prince William put forward the waiver to have a pre-Labor Day start, we had a lot of questions around that. So the way that Lauten and Prince William were able to request a pre-Labor Day start is per the code, there are four reasons that a division can put forward a pre-Labor Day start. The one that Lauten and Prince William is using is that a school is closed an average of eight days per year during five of the last 10 years. That has been the case with both Lauten and Prince William. Fairfax, as much as we have been closed, we have not been closed an average of eight days in five of the last 10 years. If in fact we are closed 11 days this school year, our average will go up to eight. Now, I don't know if we should celebrate about that, or if we should give great pause for that.
[laughing].
Right. So if we, if we, we're certainly at, I think, day three of our closure right now, so we'd need to have eight more days to that. I would certainly say to the board, if in fact we are closed 11 days this winter, or for some other reason throughout the year, I certainly think that you could consider by what time or date certain that we would go back and visit the calendar. Because once we adopt this calendar, people are going to make plans, and so we need to be mindful if in fact by a certain date, and I will not suggest a date, maybe the superintendent will, or maybe you will direct the superintendent to, by a certain date, if we miss 11 days, to then put forward a new calendar to you with a pre-Labor Day start.
Ms. Pejardo, if you would, could you highlight, because there are some differences between this school calendar for next year and the one we're currently in?
Sure.
Could you highlight those differences, please?
We will certainly be doing that. This is just a quick little overview and talking about the pre-Labor Day start. Another reason that a division can have a pre-Labor Day start is in fact that all of the surrounding districts to that district have the waiver and start before Labor Day. We already have Prince William and Lauten who have been, who've requested that waiver. So we would need the other jurisdictions that surround us to also have that. I'm not sure, granted that we have some very small divisions around us that generally don't close as much as we do, that that would happen, but if that does happen, we can make a request. The state was very clear, if we made that request, that also means we would have to agree to all start on the same day. So whatever day Lauten starts, whatever day Prince William starts, and all of the other contiguous jurisdictions, we would be required to start on that same day. There are two other reasons that a division can request a school to start before Labor Day, not school division. One is innovative practices. You may remember several years ago, we had modified calendar schools. So we were granted a waiver by Virginia regarding the start for schools like Timber Lane, Graham Road, Falls Church, I think Stewart was on the modified calendar, but that was for a group, a school or a group of schools. That's the fourth reason. And another reason that it would be approved by school, not school division, if there is a dependency from, for a school on a particular entity of sort. The example that the Director of Policy at VDOE gave us was this. In one school division in rural Virginia, that school has intern student teachers drawn from a community college. A school, drawing from a community college. And so for that community college and for that school, they requested that that school line up with the calendar of the community college, so that the workforce that they tap into, in fact, is, is, they're dependent upon that workforce. Like, as Dr. Garza said, like a lab school. So that's the clarification of the pre-Labor Day start. So we are presenting to you a calendar that starts after Labor Day. There are some pieces in it that have changed from last year to this year. Marty, Mr. Smith is going to highlight those changes, and then Cindy Trinka is just going to go through the calendar. We think that'll be about 10 minutes between the two of them, and then we'll be ready for other questions.
Ms. Reed just has one quick question.
Thank you, Dr. Pejardo, for addressing that issue. And as I had forwarded you in an email, I had heard from someone that said, "Oh, I think that you're allowed to start before Labor Day if you are in session or not in session during these certain days." In other words, it's not this blanket necessarily of calendar, but it's, you could start when you wanted to, but I don't know if it's over the Labor Day weekend or certain days. Has anybody else heard about that? Because it was brought to my attention that it was something that we should look into.
Ms. Hines.
I don't know if this is what you're talking about, but I've heard a rumor that because Labor Day starts so late this year, did I, and maybe you already addressed this, that every, any school district is allowed to start earlier, as long as we take Friday off or something like? Okay. Is that just a?
Dr. Pejardo, you talked with the VDOE just this morning, right?
Not even one hour ago, just to make sure that we have the latest information on this. And certainly, VDOE confirmed this, that if there were any change in what is now state code regarding districts' abilities to start before Labor Day, the superintendent, the state superintendent, would notify us through a superintendent's memo, and that is not, she did say that there are some things in legislation that are not law right now.
Yeah. And I think there are a number of bills that are floating out there that are being considered. We'll see if any of them, you know, have any legs and make it through the process. But I think, I think it's probably where people are getting a little confused.
I'm sorry. But does that mean we couldn't try to push the issue a little bit? We always talk about being thought leaders. I mean, can we request it? Can we go so far as to request it? You know, saying, you know, if?
We, I believe, have been pretty adamant and vocal in our support of local school systems, local boards having the authority to start school when we choose. And so, yeah, it's part, you know, Michael Malloy, he's been pushing and supporting all those bills. I think the last legislative session, we were, it was being pushed. So I think, I'm not sure, I understand what you, you're suggesting that we do, but I think in terms of the legislation, we're definitely supporting those bills.
Well, those, to me, are all long-term possibilities. I guess what I'm suggesting, or at least offering up for discussion, is whether we just send a letter and ask for it. The worst they can do is say no. Maybe we lay out, you know, here's the schedule, and we'll even, you know, whatever it is on that particular Friday, if that's their concern, the Labor Day weekend. Because in the past, I think, we never asked for a waiver for snow days or something. And so as I look back, I say to myself, we should have at least asked. So that's my point today, is should we, and I'm asking my colleagues, because I don't know, is that something that's worth at least, you know, getting out there and asking for? Not, do you understand what I'm saying? This distinction of what we're talking about. We understand that the long weekend is a revenue generator for the Commonwealth. Therefore, here's a suggestion that we're coming up with, with all deference to the work that staff has done, and I know you've done several iterations of this, but I just want to make sure we wrestle this issue to the ground and not abandon it too quickly. Now, my colleagues may say, okay, you're, you know, just sit down and be quiet, but I want to hear from you on that issue, if you don't mind.
Ms. Smith?
Did you want to talk about this now, or did you want to get the presentation and then?
Let's just go ahead and put this away. Go ahead.
Okay. So here's the problem in my mind, is because we did request a waiver years ago, before I was around, and then didn't take it. But it's the notification piece to the public. We've all received emails already from people in the public that want to know, when are you starting? We're making plans. And I think that there is a time when you need to say, we're not going to pull this on people just a few months out. Part of me feels like we've already lost the window of saying we're going to start before Labor Day because of community plans and what people do. And I think in the past, when we talked about this, if we got the waiver, it was like, okay, we're going to give people time to get used to this idea and this change. So you have to mix the idea of the community input and feedback to know, is the community ready for the change like that, and can you just pull it? So I'm concerned that it would be too late to do that. And I'm not sure that we'd get a response. I think if we had, you know, done this previously, it might be worth it, but at this point, I think it's too late.
Yeah. On this particular issue, I support what Mrs. Smith has said, that it is too late for this September for anything. I think at this point in time, I think we need to just tell folks in the community that we'll start day after the Labor Day, and hopefully in the future, they can change.
Ms. Velkoff?
So as a thought experiment, do we know what the penalty is that would be incurred if we were to simply decide? It would be a financial penalty of, yeah, okay.
I saw, I saw Dr. Dockery's eyes get about as big as charger dinner plates, you know? They just, I didn't know that your eyes could get bigger than your actual head, but they just did. Ms. Evans?
I'm kind of liking this guerrilla theater approach that Mr. Velkoff has, but I don't think we can actually do it. I think this is, is something that we should consider for part of our legislative package next year, because it's, it's different than what we have, have done in the, I mean, we, every year we have the legislative package, but this is a little bit different to say, if it's this late, then could we do it differently if we take this off? I mean, we might want to include that. I'm just, I think at this point, whatever they're going to do, haven't they already said no to this in the state legislature?
They've indicated to us, I believe, that we do not have the authority, because current law is so prescriptive in the Commonwealth, that prohibits us from doing it, that we, you know, we've never even had the authority. I guess we could ask, but they're just going to turn around and say, you don't have the legal authority. I don't know about, you know, what if we just did it just because? You know, I don't know.
No, but I mean, basically, there, this issue has been put to rest at the legislative level, has it not? In terms of, they're not going to change this. Right? It has not.
Okay. I'm going to move our conversation along. I'm just going to say, just from the, the perspective of, I love the way Mr. Velkoff's thinking, is civil disobedience. I mean, wouldn't that be a Washington Post headline? You know, Fairfax County School Board Goes Rogue on Virginia General Assembly because of late, you know, Labor Day start and the refusal to meet the needs of the students at the local level? I mean, it depends on how thick your skin is and if you're willing to accept that, but can we let them? Go ahead. Do you have, do you have to? Okay.
No, I just wanted to correct something in the record. I, I do think that we, we have requested waivers on multiple occasions, especially last year. I know that you were in conversations with Pat Wright all the time, you and Dan Paris, right?
And that was, we were trying to not have to add days to the end of the calendar.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, yeah, told us what we had to do.
Okay, that's different than a Labor Day waiver. And certainly, I, I like the admonition that maybe we be more focused with our legislative agenda and pick something, but that's good. So if we can go through the calendar, please?
Absolutely. Thank you so much. Okay, and then, Mr. Smith, if you'll just talk about some of the highlights from last year to this year and some of the changes in meaning?
Sure. So we have a 180-day student calendar before you. I like to call them the pink days. There are 14 pink days, which we use for teacher workdays, staff development days, and what we, at one time, what we currently call strategic planning days. Consensus has been to change those to school planning days. It makes more sense for our school-based staff to understand how those days should be used and programmed. With that, you'll see, if you divert your eyes to the lower right-hand corner, we have been able to balance out our quarters nicely with this calendar, even with the late start, and you'll notice some of the changes as we go through month by month. But by regulation, we need to have a 90-day semester, so we've been able to create that with two pristine quarters in the first two quarters of the year, and then going to the third and fourth quarters, we've balanced that out with a 47- and 43-day, both with 47- and 43-day quarters. We also have included within this calendar a two-week winter break, which actually received applause with one of our teacher groups, when we talked about that this year, with that particular group. And so we've continued to have that as part of the calendar. You'll note some changes that we have with our calendar. Because we have the 45-day quarter, we have extended the quarter beyond the normal November 2nd and 3rd, where it would have normally been. Generally, our quarters have ended with Election Day being the second of those, or the quarter normally ended on Election Day. We've decided to push that out a bit more to the 13th of November. You'll note that pushing that out enabled us to have 45 days within the first quarter. We're still going to give schools the flexibility to use half of those days on the 2nd and 3rd for teacher conferences at the elementary level. And we've then also added that teacher workday in November. So that's a major change from this year's calendar. Another major, major change by pushing the quarter out, we're no longer ending the quarter at the end of January. That's been pushed to the first week of February. And for this year's calendar, we have a strategic planning day, the day after spring break. We have now removed that on this particular calendar, and we've moved that day to the end of the year. So those are just some of the major highlights and changes, and we will be going through month by month now. Ms. Trinka will go through month by month to highlight all of those individual changes with a bit more information.
Good afternoon. So as you're counting the pink days, the first one starts at the end of August, on Monday, August 31. It looks teeny tiny right now, but we'll be broadcasting that in a bigger square as we move forward with an approved calendar. And we all know the dreaded first day of school on September 8th, with a school planning day on September 28th, Columbus Day holiday on October 12th, followed by a staff development school planning day on November 2 and 3. We're looking to allow at least half of those days to be conference days or touching bases, depending on the grade level. End of quarter on November 13, with, followed by a teacher workday on November 16, with a two-hour early release before Thanksgiving break on November 26 and 27. Then in December, we have a two-hour early release for students and staff, just, just exactly how it is in, in November, before the two full-week winter vacation. Martin Luther King Holiday on January 18, followed by end of quarter with a two-hour early release for students on February 4, with a teacher workday and school planning day. And then President's Day on February 15, followed by a full five-day spring break, March 21 to 25. End of quarter with a two-hour early release in April, on April 21st. Teacher workday on the 22nd. The Memorial Day holiday in May, ending on 180th Day on June 23rd, followed by a school planning day and a teacher workday.
May I add, initially, in some initial drafts of the calendar, we actually had the June 24th strategic, school planning day earlier in the calendar, and it was suggested by some of our employee groups that in order for us to reduce how late we're going in June, could we put that on that last day, which kind of pushes it back to the 23rd. It does give an opportunity, by then, our schools will have a lot of their student assessment data back, and that would be a good opportunity for them to have some kind of planned day around their school planning, getting ready for the next school year before everyone leaves. And then the final thought I would leave with you, we think there's some ways, assuming you adopt this calendar or some form of this calendar, that we do have the Monday, the 27th as our last teacher workday or employee day. There may be some ways that we could provide some flexibility to our schools, where they could maybe replace that day by another day that they choose at the campus level, because we know that that would send, I think, a positive message to our employee groups, that we would not expect our teachers to come back on the 27th. So we may, there may be some flexibility. For example, I had some principals just this morning at breakfast suggest that they would love to use that day in August. You know, and so you're trading out an employee day for something else. So I think there's some flexibility there, and certainly would appreciate your thoughts on that as well.
Okay, right now?
Did we, did we say there's no perfect calendar, though?
Absolutely. Absolutely. And just then, just thank you, Dr. Garza. And then there's one more thought to share with you, and it is that the calendar we proposed has the, meets the requirement of state code that says we are to be in school 180 days for students. It has 180 days. So any days that we flip-flop, we would need to replace it with another student day. Because we don't, unlike previous years, we didn't build in any of the three days that we have in, have had in the past. So if there's any discussion regarding adding another day, another student day, we would have to flip-flop it or, or add, or add days at the end, or, exactly.
Okay, so Ms. Hines, Ms. Evans, and Ms. Strauss.
Okay, great. Did you say, and I missed it, how many snow days are built in here? 11? I'm sorry. Okay, thank you. I missed it. 11 days. Okay. All right, and then I want, a quick question. I appreciate the clarification about the, the end of June, and I guess I had a question about that, you know, because I think if we tell teachers that they can have the 27th off, they're still going to need a day to clean up the classroom after the students leave. So I'm kind of wondering, with this strategic planning day at the end of the year, what do we think is a better use of that time? Teachers being able to clear out their classrooms, or meetings on student data, or maybe there's a blend that a principal could use? I don't know.
Now, we say under school planning days, that half is at the, the school's discretion, and half is available for the teacher, for teacher-directed time? So at minimum, they would get half that day on the 24th, and I would, I would imagine many of our schools would not completely optimize the other half, that they would, you know, maybe have a faculty meeting for a couple hours or so, and then, then release teachers to their classrooms to wrap, wrap up. So I would, so that, that gives you kind of a minimum and maximum.
Okay. Well, that's, I mean, yeah, I, thank you. I sort of, I guess I would just sort of raise that as a red flag and make sure we hear from our teacher associations on that, because I do think if we tell teachers, no, you don't have to come in on the 27th, but then we don't give them enough time to clean up, they're going to have to come in on the 27th anyway. So, all right. And my only other question was, could we, and if you did this, I'm sorry, a description of teacher workdays? Does that mean teacher-directed, or what, what does that mean?
Yes, so, student workday, or teacher workday, excuse me. We did indicate in the first week prior to the students arriving, that one of those teacher workdays is to be teacher-directed, which means that there are going to be no meetings scheduled by administration on those day, on that day. So any day except September 2nd, whether it be August 31st, September 1st, September 3rd, September 4th, will be a teacher-directed workday. Just one.
So if I could follow up, then are we saying that on this calendar, the only guaranteed teacher-directed workday is one day in that week? The other TW days are not teacher-directed?
Correct. They, I mean, that, those are days that administration can schedule meetings, conferences, et cetera. Open houses.
Okay. I'm not sure that that's what we, am I, have we done that in the past, or have we had more?
Mm-hmm. This is the, I want to say, third year?
I think the.
The first year, when we did this, Ms. Hines and the board, we did not clarify which day, we tried to, we tried to direct to use a certain particular day, but it was unfortunate that, you know, with our late-breaking information, it did not go as well. So we needed to designate, you can do any of these days and give schools total flexibility except for one of the days. So any of the four days could be used.
Ms. Evans, Ms. Strauss, and then Mr. Moon.
So in developing this calendar, the teacher organizations were consulted?
Yes. The teacher organizations are part of the Superintendent's Teacher Advisory Council, so they are in the room for all of the presentations regarding that. Additionally, we have my staff, Equity and Employee Relations has monthly meetings with the teacher association presidents as well.
Did, was there any involvement of parents or parent groups?
So the, well, our, our parent groups and our parents have written in to us, asking questions about this. We, as, as they wrote in, we certainly addressed their questions and made consideration for them. The closest group to a parent or constituent group outside of a teacher or principal would be our Human Relations Advisory Committee, that also saw the calendar.
So they, they've reviewed this and, okay.
Yes.
I, I have to say, in looking at this calendar, I, I have concerns about November. I'm looking at a calendar that has only one full school week. It's three days, and then five days, four days, and then two and a half days, and then going into December. Was there any consideration to putting any of those days off of school into the end of October?
I think, I think Ms. Evans brings up a really good point. I've struggled with November, but let me, let me say this. November 2nd and 3rd, we're tied there because of the election day. So that's why we're really, because we don't, we want to clear our campuses for elections. So many of them are used as election sites. So we're, we're tied in to November 2nd and 3rd. The quarter ends on November the 13th, just because we start so late, and that, that hurt us. And teachers really expect and need that teacher workday at the end of the quarter, so they can work on their grades and, and all that. So we were kind of, we were kind of fixed there as well. And then we turn around and we have Thanksgiving. So it just was kind of a perfect kind of storm of all these things kind of happening. We've tried to think of a solution to it. I don't know that there is a solution, at least one that we could come up with, nor any of the groups that we visited with, but your point's a good one. I hate it being so chopped up.
Yeah. It's very chopped up.
So I would only add to that, that it troubled us for the same way, same reasons, and the, the options were to come to school on a Monday and then be off for Tuesday because of parking, and the county really does, and the cafeteria's being used. And the county really has been very, you know, needs a partner to make sure that we have those elections go on. So then you have families come for one day, but not two, because we need to have teacher work, teacher workdays to do the grades. But the biggest thing that we needed to do that was hard this year was to ensure that we had time for parent conferences at the elementary. That wasn't as explicit this year in the calendar, and we got a lot of feedback that we need to do that on those two days. And then the teacher workday for staff development, high schools can do that on the 2nd and the 3rd, and then elementary can flip it and do that on the teacher workday, so that it's, it's getting all of the teachers the pieces that they need to do.
Okay. I guess the other, the other piece is, little-known fact. Okay, I guess the other, the other piece is, little-known fact, that the end of October is the latest civil twilight. So we, if we had more days off then, that would have a value there, too, in terms of morning pickups. So I guess I would hope we might be able to think about this a little bit, about putting some of those November days into late October.
Which ones would you want us to move to October?
Well, that Monday, I realize that's not ideal, but if we looked at Monday the second, you know, if we moved that to October thirtieth, I guess I would want to consult with people about that, is that the sixteenth? The teacher workday, I hear what you're saying, that the teachers feel that at the end of the quarter, they need a, a clear day.
The piece of the quarter, without doing that, we had a thirty-day quarter, which was impossible for the teachers to get the instructional content in. So when we took this to teachers-
Oh, because that's in the new quarter.
Right, when they took this to the teachers, there was like, this late start made them have a thirty or thirty-two day quarter, and they were, like, we can't get all of our work in, in that time.
I think the other consideration, and we looked at this, the choppiness, as Jess was suggesting, we would also have students out one day-
Right.
-on a Friday, come back on a Monday-
I understand.
-and then be out on a Tuesday. I would, I would assert that we would have very high absenteeism on that Monday in between. I, I just don't think folks would, students would show up. Many would show, many would show up, but many would not.
Okay, well, I mean, I, I guess I'd, I'll want to think about it and-
Sure.
-consult with some folks a little bit more. Thank you.
Okay, I have Ms. Strauss, Mr. Moon, and Ms. Smith.
I think this calendar actually looks good. I think it's, you know, we've, we've solved the things that have to be solved. I'm glad to hear that it appears that the various teacher groups are okay with how this, how this is set up. When, when's the testing window for AP, IB, and then SOLs?
So it's in May, I'm gonna look on yours for just a second, and the testing window is, AP and IB is around the eleventh and twelfth, and so it's the reason that we have the teacher workday at the end of April.
Okay.
And then we have the May with the student days for testing.
Okay. Right.
We've looked and looked at May-
No, 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 I know.
-and every time we put, try to put something there-
No, you can't.
-we hit, we hit some testing-
Right. I guess the, the, the one, one opportunity to have a calendar that looks like this, is that, you know, we talk about like Langley's, Langley Leap, and the opportunity for high schools, after the AP exams, to do some very interesting interdisciplinary research-based projects. We, this calendar provides us with a little more time to do that. So I would, I would hope that schools and teachers would consider that, because
I know that this year-
We've got a little more time this year.
...the window goes through June second, so it does, and it'll be similar next year.
Exactly, exactly. So I would encourage people to take a look at that. It, it gives a little more time to do some really very exciting projects. Thanks.
Okay, Mr. Moon, Ms. Smith, Mr. McElveen.
Let me, let me first go back to that November question. I was thinking along the same, I, I have similar concerns about the November calendar that Ms. Evans had. And I also understand about you not wanting to have a first quarter too short. But when, you know, Dr. Docary said thirty, thirty-two days, if we end the first quarter at the end of October, that gives us thirty-seven days, doesn't it?
It was thirty-seven, sorry.
Thirty-seven, and, and you still feel that thirty-seven is way too short to have a quarter.
It's skewed, so that if you do that, you have a thirty-seven day and a fifty-three day quarter?
Understand that.
And so when we were working with the, the different groups, from IS to the teachers, they were, I think the feedback was a balance, was something that they valued. We did, at first, just say, we'll just have to eat the shorter quart, quarter, because of those days. But then when we were looking at other options, that's why we, this is, I mean, as we said, we've looked at about fifty-two options, and this is the one we are.
I'm sure you did, if not, three hundred and sixty-five different options. Okay, so I'm gonna give a more thought to that. And the next question that I have is, I think one of the differences between this year's calendar, with the next proposed next year's calendar, is day after, Monday after the spring break. The Monday after the spring break gives a lot, many families a great time to recover from their Sunday activities. And I, as a one person, you get to appreciate that, which we don't see it. And I just sent in a question to Dr. Paljaro over the weekend, if he want to have that, we need to find the trade-off. So let me just throw out one thing, you know, what you think about February eighth Strategic Planning Day with March twenty-eighth, whether that would create problems?
So February eighth is actually a day students aren't in session?
February eighth, no, students are not gonna be in session.
Right, okay, and we were, and you know what, and we've, we, I think that was where we began this, is that we had it.
You didn't end there, so there had to be good reasons.
Because I've seen so many different versions of this calendar in the last month or so, two months. I know we originally started out with a calendar that had a student holiday adjacent to spring break. So first I, so anyone who, teachers' group, principals' group that saw a very early version, it was there as well. It did, and I, and I think the flip-flop was the day at the end, so that we wouldn't, we also were ending the twenty-eighth when that was the case. Now, when, when it was first given with that day-
Students went to school on the twenty-fourth.
Correct, correct. And so then we made that flip-flop, so that it would be that if, so.
I don't think I can, I don't think I followed that.
So, so basically, I think what Mr. Moon's saying is, what would be the impact if you took the February eighth Strategic Planning Day and moved it-
As a fourth school day for everyone.
And moved it to March twenty-eighth?
I, I can answer that, I believe. You're right, it's just moving one, it's just moving that Strategic Planning Day to another day.
To March twenty-eighth.
Right. And they'll be moving it from the eighth, February the eighth, to March the twenty-eighth. And it's just, you know, certainly that can be done. The, the rationale, I think, for February, if I recall correctly, is that would give parents a long, one long weekend in February, and then in March, they already have the full week prior. So I mean, it's-
February, you'll, you already have another holiday on the week following, February fifteenth.
That's correct. Right. Then you have the Friday the fifth through Friday the eighth. It's just a matter, we can move that day, Mr. Moon, to any day you want. You just simply-
Okay, you know, if, if, if staff feels that they're up, they're up, they gotta be concerned, they gotta be impacted, just let me know. Because I want to give some thought, whether, whether, you know, I should bring an amendment to that, and talk to other board members. But if, you know, you tell us that, that's gonna have-
Okay, Mr. Moon, got it.
Yes, ma'am.
Got it. We're moving on. Ms. Smith and Mr. McElveen?
Thank you. No perfect calendars, right? But, you know, we got to this idea that two weeks off in the winter break was important. I'm sure it is for some people and not for others. My, my discomfort with this is having a school planning day on June twenty-fourth. I think it's too late. I want to understand a little bit more what the superintendent was saying about kind of trading off the twenty-seventh somehow, but the way that I would try to, if we got to the idea of what Mr. Moon was talking about, I would think that that school planning day could be March twenty-eight, or could be in April, or, or somewhere. I, I just, you think about what's happening at the end of the year and all the issues, and it's, I don't know the value in it. And what I don't know, because I'm not in schools, and I don't think it's necessarily my job to know, is when do they really need those planning days to do the work that needs to happen for students? Because I don't think the valuable work for students is gonna happen on June twenty-four. So I have trouble supporting that.
So the rationale behind that was that, that's at a point where schools have gotten all of their SOL data now that it's online, and that it would not be everyone in a school planning date, but you would be making some teams, your admin team, your other folks, who are planning for summer programs, as well as getting, as we shift to an earlier school improvement plan. So it was put there for, when we talked to principals, many of them already use those days, not the whole day, because teachers are packing up, but they would have meetings that said, we want to get a, just a quick meeting about our data, and this is what we're gonna do over the summer, another meeting that was talking about school summer program, and they're not all the same people. So there was a, a feeling by administrators that you could grab pieces of that time.
And also, the kids would be in school that day if, if that's not a strategic planning day. Yes, you have to have them go to school if you don't-
Yeah, they would, if, if we move that to somewhere else, because actually, an earlier version we had did not have the twenty-fourth as Strategic Planning Day. We actually moved it there based upon primarily principal feedback, if I, if I recall correctly. Y'all helped me on this, but we did have it earlier, Ms. Smith, to your point, and then that would have students going through the twenty-fourth, as you pointed out, Ms. Strauss, Ms. Schultz, that's correct. You know, all of these strategic planning days are all about, wherever we put them, it's about the administrative team, the leadership team, really planning effectively for them. And I think that we had that same situation, but I think your point's a good one. We have to make sure that we plan effectively for that day. And I would say, from a school leadership perspective, them wrapping up their plans for summer school, but also getting ready for the start of the school year before everyone leaves, you know. But again, it's, it's contingent upon, there's no ideal place to put it.
So the teacher's contract is one hundred and eighty-three days, and you have-
One ninety-four.
A one ninety-four, thank you. So to get those days, and you need to have the teachers coming in. So the only way to change that day out is either to make it a workday, August twenty-one, or take another, there has to be that day for them to work.
And also keep in mind, the contract is the fiscal year as well. So the, keeping my HR hat on, in terms of that occurring during that time, I mean, we could have some flexibility, as the superintendent has said, in, in, in terms of that, but we would want to, you know, make sure that that happened within that, those fiscal requirements. The fiscal year requirement.
All right, what are you suggesting, Ms. Smith?
I'm not necessarily suggesting something. I just think it would be a lot nicer for our teachers to be done on, on June twenty-four. I think it's more realistic. I think you could do the planning you're gonna do if that was the teacher workday. The problem is, if you want the kids to be done on the, on the twenty-third of June, you have to pick another day for the teachers to come. You're not gonna take and say, okay, you know, make it the twenty-first of December. I mean, I understand the hard work you've had here, you can't find it. So the only easy place is, who wants to come in on August twenty-one?
So I do believe that that was another place for the last day to be again, if you are packed up and done. A lot of principals open the building on Saturday, and so that's where the principals were talking to Karen about, Dr. Garz, about flexibility, that it isn't the intent that everybody show up, that we do what's needed with Phyllis, you know, with her HR fiscal year, but that many principals were saying that they would share in the Saturday before and the Saturday after, they would have staggered times for people to come in, because it is the understanding that it's a hard, and then you turn right around and you start the summer school. So I think the intent was to put it there, so that you came to work and had set time, but that Monday was more flexible. The other thing that goes with the planning date on the eighth, and I do agree, Mr. Moon, that it could be swapped. Principals often get their mid-year data, and it gives them an opportunity to plan intervention for the second semester, and that's why they had looked at that date then.
And I guess, just on that note, I don't, I don't support swapping out the date in February for school planning, because I think you need it more that time of the year than you do later.
Okay, Mr. McElveen was next. I don't know where he went, so I'm gonna go ahead and go, because I don't have anybody else on my list. My, my concern, too, along with Mr. Moon and Ms. Evans, was the November calendar, as soon as I saw this, as we prepared for the, the meeting manager portion of this. On the one hand, I'm happy that the quarter end moved, but I was disappointed not to see an option for Veterans Day. And in fact, if ever there was a call for a better distribution of days through November, it was somehow coordinating the quarter end and Veterans Day to allow a longer run up to Thanksgiving. And I thought that it would have presented a more neat calendar for November, as bad as it is, because we've been cheated up on the back end, or actually on the front end, by starting so late in September. So I, I agree with Ms. Smith with regard to the twenty-seventh. I agree with Mr. Moon, and would wholeheartedly support, because we haven't come into the spring break yet, and people are just now realizing, this is the first time we've had that, and if we have it and then pull it back, I think we're gonna hear very negative consequences. And the only reason we haven't had any feedback yet is people haven't experienced the benefit of this year's calendar, which I think was structured so beautifully. And so I, I do think that there is some possibility of a give here with either the end of the calendar, or how November is arranged. And, and I, I definitely appreciate the fact that the teachers' organizations and the principals were engaged, but to my knowledge, I'm not aware that we've ever done a public engagement effort about our school calendar. And as Chair of Public Engagement, just soliciting that parent input about how our calendar is structured and what works well, and the issue of, you know, Columbus Day, is Columbus Day the, the best use of our time, and, and how things are structured around the fact that we have one federal holiday that isn't acknowledged on our calendar, and that's Veterans Day. And so, you know, I don't know if it's quote-unquote "too late" to do public engagement. It's too bad, because this is the year, if we ever were gonna get public sway with the Virginia General Assembly, because of how late Labor Day is, you know, when people see this, I think it's really gonna be a shocker for how late school starts. And really, you know, we need to gain some traction with our, with our public on, on the issue of the late start. So I, I will be looking with Mr. Moon around the March calendar date, but certainly, I, I'm gonna continue to explore November, because I just, I don't, I don't think it's, not that it's not the best staff work, but it wasn't what I was hoping for. Mr. McElveen, you had left the room, and we skipped you, so do you have something?
Sure.
Yeah, thank you. I would support the moonshine amendment, and additionally, I would also plead with staff to, when we advertise this calendar, in addition to when we post it on the website, please, please, please have fuller explanations of what the different teacher workdays stand for, because I still get questioned to this day, and I, to be honest, I don't remember precisely what we've designated for each day. So if we could just say, if it's a strategic planning day, half-day is teacher time, half-day is, is school time. I know that's, that continues to be a major concern of our teachers.
Okay, Ms. Reed?
Thank you quickly. Thank you for all your work. I know that it was very resource-intensive. I still have the concern about how late we're going in June, and, you know, the parents perennially come in and say, you know, gee, my kid has to go to camp, or whatever. So I guess I'm wondering, in addition, if we can have a sense for the, the AP, IB, and SOL dates on there, because then it's, it's gonna be very apparent that we have kind of some dead space. And every year, I know that we talk about this, and we come up with some laudable projects, but again, in a resource-constrained environment, and for a board that's concerned about equity, I mean, our kids aren't getting the same preparation time as other kids in this Commonwealth. So that's, that's a concern, and I think I'm preaching to the choir here, so I, I don't know if I expect you to respond, but it, that's a continued frustration, I think. But it, that's a continued frustration, I think. So, well, do you have anything you want to say about that?
I, I do. I think it's very clear that this past year, we had to add, was it two or three days to the, into the calendar to make up for days? And I think I kid about that. No one liked that. And we did have to work with our schools to say, come up with some interesting and innovative work that students can do. That was different, because we actually were going to school beyond the advertised last day of school. With regard to instructional days beyond testing, we have an entire curriculum that they're instructed, our teachers and our schools are instructed to follow, and it doesn't stop after testing. It, it takes them all the way through the instructional year. Where we have to really work with them to do something innovative and different is really when it's beyond that advertised day, and, you know, we have to encourage kids to come to school. But they do, we do, our scope and sequence and all of our curriculum documents cover every, every school day throughout the, throughout the year. So, it doesn't end after testing. And I just want to be clear about that.
But with all due respect, Dr. Garza, my experience is very different than that. And I think we've heard from other, you know, the videos and things like that. But maybe the way to make at least this board member feel better is to have some information about what types of things are planned, or what are the outcomes are for June. Because that is out there in the community, this thought of, well, once the tests are done, you know, you really don't have to show up, or you're going to be playing games or watching movies, or whatever. So, I think if we provide information-
Looks like we need to be doing a lot of walkthroughs, doesn't it, for June? We need to be on this, then, if that's the case.
Okay. So, what's the what's, what's the what's next? What, are, are we talking about this goes to new business and then action item? Is that correct? And what are those dates? February 19th and March 5th? So, if we're going to have any amendments, we've got to be working, you know, with staff towards that March 5th date. And then, the next step would only be, would you all be able to add the AP and IB dates? Or even, I don't know about SOL dates, you know? And I think that would be good for public engagement as well? Oh, Ms. Smith, I was just going to say, this work session is adjourned.
I know you're so excited to hear what I have to say. My recommendation is that if board members have amendments about the calendar, they get them in so they can be posted at February 19, so the public has two weeks to provide feedback to us.
Okay. That was a good public engagement. And it was short. Ms. Strauss? I'm not using the word "short," you know, in a pejorative sense, but keep it short.
Okay. Just very quickly, those of you who are thinking of rearranging this, for elementary students, that the length of that first quarter is critical, because those are the kids, that there's always a certain amount of getting back in the swing of things for the youngest students. So, I would caution people to remember, put yourself in the shoes of an elementary school, an elementary teacher, and child.
To not order too short or too long?
That they have the quarter not too short. They need every instructional day for our youngest students in order to meet their goals by the end of that first quarter, so.
Okay. Is that it? Work session adjourned. Oh. Next steps. I don't, I think, I don't think we need it as a next step. Dr. Dockery got it. They're going to, they're going to just put AP and IB on the calendar.
AP, IB, testing.
See, that's just doing. We're not creating work. They're just going to do it.
And then, the other, I think I got, we've got, is to talk more about what happens in the month of June beyond testing dates. I got that.
Okay. Okay. Now, we really are adjourned. I've said it for the third time, so third time's a charm.
Dr. Dockery, don't go anywhere. Okay. Just getting your materials? Okay. We're going to plow ahead.
Two, two-minute break. They got a break for the-
Two-minute break.
So, we were 20-